We are now live.
Okay. I don't have quite six o'clock there now at six o'clock. All right. I'd like to call this meeting to order and read by usual, all council members are participating remotely pursuant to the governor's executive order number N 2920 in order to minimize the spread of the COVID-19 virus. The meeting is being livestreamed from the city website, cityofgillroy.org, and is viewable on cable channel 17 and on Facebook Live. Public comments can be made during the meeting by watching the meeting online and calling 669-900-6833 or logging into Zoom at HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash R B dot G Y forward slash A J S eight W S and enter passcode nine three five three six four. When I call for public comment, press star nine on your telephone keypad or use the raise your hand icon. Christine, I think I should, we need to do roll call for a study session, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I don't see it on my agenda, but I'm calling for roll call.
Yes, so tonight's meeting agenda was posted on Friday, May 21st at 2:45 PM. Councilmember. President. Councilmember Brocko. Brocko.
He's on mute. Here.
Councilmember Hilton.
Here.
Councilmember Laro Muñoz.
President.
Councilmember Marx.
Here.
Councilmember Tovar.
Here.
And Mayor Blinkley.
Here. Okay, council, if anybody's got Facebook going together, can you please shut that down because it creates the echo, okay? When we're in the meeting, we shouldn't be on Facebook too. Let, let that be something you watch separately. All right, tonight we have a study session, a presentation of the city administrators proposed fiscal year 2022 and 2023 operating budget culmination of a few meetings we've had thus far, and this one is going to be, is it Harjo giving the staff report, Jimmy? No, Jimmy's giving the staff report. Okay, so why don't we start there?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of city council, as the mayor just stated, this is the next in the series of several meetings we've had, and as we continue through the process, we started at the very, very high level, and now we're circling our way and believe that at the beginning of June, we'll, we'll put this down for a landing. Tonight is going to focus a lot more on the specific budget details and things that are in the departments, but we do have a little bit of a follow up from our last couple of meetings that I'd like to see if we could finish up tonight and then get ready for June 7th. So why don't I go ahead and start? All right, are you able to see that, my slideshow? Okay, great, we're off to a good start. So this is the fiscal year 22 and 23 operating budget, and this is our study session. Again, there's no decisions tonight. We'll, we'll ask you on June 7th to give your approval of the fiscal year 22 and 23 budget, but for tonight, we're still here taking your input, answering your questions, or doing whatever you'd like with this. So here we go. So tonight is the next to the last step in the budget development process. We are required by law to have a budget in place on June 1st, 2022. That can come in many forms, but traditionally Gilroy has done the biennial and has made the deadline, you know, consistently year after year. We've been through the council priorities and goals and vision 2030, and we're going to finish up a few of those edits that we talked about in the last meeting, and go ahead and re-show your council policy and programs list. There were no changes to that at the last meeting, and then get you into the proposed budget summary, and then we'll do quick departmental presentations, and then you can ask all of our department heads and a few of our division managers questions about their particular budget or their, their particular department. So I'll, I'll be, I'll be your emcee, but really the show will be put on by, by department heads and division heads. So as you see here, we.
Jimmy, you mean July 1st, right? You said June 1st, but we have to have the budget adopted by July 1st.
I really did mean July 1st.
Yes, okay, just want to make sure the public understood that, okay.
The budget process for us, although it shows that we kicked this off in January of this year, we really kicked this off about July of last year as part of the fiscal recovery plan. We did a lot of budget cleanup and a lot of painful budget adjustments back then, so but the regular department budget kicked off in January, we did your council strategic planning workshop in February, and then our departments have been working on the budgets for almost the last two months. And so tonight, we're with the proposed budget released and council budget, budget study session, and then June adoption. And then the mid-cycle, which for us has been pretty quiet. We, we don't tend to spend a lot of time on budget amendments and items like that, which is intentional because we work in the CIP during that off year, but whatever we need to do, we'll be back in January of 2022 to see if we need to make any adjustments. Okay, I'm not going to go over vision 2030 because we had cleaned that up last time. There, I, I watched the video again, there were no other comments. It seemed like the council was good with that, but we'll, we'll, we'll put that out in your packet so you can make sure before you adopt that you're, you're 100% clear. I went back and watched all the comments from the last study session that we had, and so where you see red on this slide were the words that I was asked to, to try to massage, and I'd like to make sure that council's okay with what we have here, so the, the second bullet is maintain and improve city infrastructure, including street facilities incorporates green, green energy practices. And then the next to last, oh, sorry. The next to last bullet, ensure neighborhood equity from services, including public safety, streets, parks, and recreation. And then lastly was promote availability of safe, affordable housing for all Gilroy residents. Very minor adjustments, a few words that we wanted, because words matter, and so I want to make sure that before I move on, we, we're okay with what we've got here. Okay, not hearing anything, I'll take that as an affirmation, and we'll move on to your council policy program. There were no adjustments to this. This is your legislative council for the next two years, so you can expect when you come back from your July break that we will start bringing those forward to you. You won't have to do council initiated agenda items, staff will just start rolling those out for you to deliberate. And again, I'll just look here. If I don't hear anything, I'll just keep going until you, you tell me to stop. Okay, so let's get into the proposed budget. The budget highlights, we talked to you last Monday about the American Rescue Plan, which is a very significant component of our budget because it allows us to restore services earlier than we expected. We've, we've called it bridge funding because we really didn't think their economy would recover for another two years, but the influx of the $10.9 million has helped a lot, and so within that, we have added some positions back in the budget and also invested in some infrastructure, including streets and other areas that we feel are eligible at this time. As I noted last, last meeting, we do not have 100% clarity on how we're able to use this money. So even though you may have proven concept and you may adopt the budget on June 7th, I can assure you, we will be coming back to discuss the ARP in greater detail later as we get more clarification, but that has really been the big change in the budget that we, we brought to you since we started this back in January, February. It should be no surprise that we're going to continue our focus on economic development, including the three initiatives that we have to make Gilroy a recreation destination, and then significant investments in infrastructure, and I won't steal everybody's thunder because a lot of this is in the department presentations, but these are the areas where you can really see that we're putting some money into because one, we have the, the savings from enterprise funds and for other areas, especially like the civic center, we're, we're close to having no choice. And so while I won't go into great detail there. The proposed budget, if you follow the red circle there, we have about $186 million in revenue or resources, and then we're going to use about 175 of it, and then the next year we dropped to 131 and 155, and that's primarily due to capital projects. When people think of a, you know, some people call us a small city, others call us a medium, but we are actually a very good sized corporation, and we have over $200 million in revenue and expenses and over, close to a billion dollars in assets, or half billion dollars in assets, sorry. And so when you look at the numbers all total with all the types of different funds, we are a lot larger than I think some people realize that, so. And then again, no surprises here, our revenues mainly come from taxes and property and sales tax, and then the charges for services, a lot of that is development revenues and other items that aren't discretionary, but we do focus on the taxes because that's the only money you really have that you can spend where you'd like and where your priorities are. And then lastly, talking about the investment in infrastructure, you see the largest category of expenditures we'll have in the next couple of years will be in capital, including, you know, plant expansion, streets, civic center, other areas where we have some funding or have identified some funding options, and so that'll be what we will really be focusing on over the next couple of years. Okay, so I'm going to take a break here. I'll be your emcee the rest of the way. I'm going to turn it over to our finance director, who's going to talk to you about the specific areas of the budget that they finances worked on, and we're all here to answer questions. So with that, I'll turn it over to Harjo, and Harjo, I'll advance your slides whenever you're ready. And you're muted.
Thank you, Jimmy. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and the members of the community. Hergel Sangan is the city's finance director. I'll be presenting to you the general fund and the high level enterprise fund budgets. Next slide, please. So in the areas of a general fund for fiscal year 22, we're expecting our sources to be about $61.3 million, which includes the first payment of the ARPA money, which is about 5.5, actually, the, the second payment of the ARPA money, which is about $5.5 million. And for fiscal year 23, we're expecting $56.5 million, which is sort of in line to what pre-COVID level revenues were for the general fund. Specifically focusing on, on the two primary sources for the general fund, if you look at sales tax numbers, it was one of the hardest hit revenues for the city. We are seeing signs of recovery as sheltering place orders are relaxed and ultimately they'll be removed. And again, you know, we do expect sales tax to recover to pre-COVID levels by fiscal year 23, and fiscal year 22, we're expecting about a 16% increase over fiscal year 21, which is about 18.9, and in fiscal year 3, we're expecting another 9% increase, amounting to about 20.6. For the property tax, we're expecting $17.3 million. This does include a $1.4 million ERAF payment. ERAF is a portion of the annual property tax revenue that's collected by the county. It goes to the support of schools and local this, school districts, and anytime the amount contributed to the ERAF is more than the minimum cost of funding those schools, any access ERAF, as they call it, is returned to the counties, the cities, and the special districts. So for fiscal year 22, that amount is about 1.4, and for property tax and fiscal year 23, we're expecting $16.9 million included in that amount is about $700,000 for that access ERAF payment. If you were to exclude the ERAF side, we are projecting from fiscal year 22 to 23 about a 2% growth in our property tax. So that kind of are the two primary areas of our primary sources, if you will, for tax revenues for UUT franchise. We are not expecting a significant change because there's a lot of things that are happening in this landscape in the industry on what the city can and cannot assess. So we're holding those tight in a conservative assumption. For TOT, we do assume we will recover to pre-COVID levels by, by fiscal year 23, so we are assuming a 40% increase in 22 and another 28% increase in 23. So those amounts are 1.4 to 1.8. Next slide, please. All right, now just focusing in on the expenditure side, primarily the expenses are related to the personnel category. That's because we are a full service city, whereas we do provide, you know, our police are on fire, general governments, governance, including development services and related engineering services all in-house. So that's really primarily where the, much of the budget goes for the general fund expense. For fiscal year 22 in total, we're looking to expand about 53.3, and fiscal year 22, we're looking to expand about 57.4. Included in these dollar amounts are the ARPA programmatic expenditures related to streets and position outfits.
Quick question, sorry, I just want to make clarification. You said for 2022, 53, it's 57.3, correct?
Yeah, so 2022, the total budget is 57.3.
Okay, just making sure, thank you.
Harjo, may I ask two, for under personnel expense, I knew you were trying to go fast, but 69% personnel from the general fund in 2022, 72% in 2023. Most of that is police and fire, correct?
That's correct.
And is it about, because at least it was in 2018, 2019, and I was looking at this more closely, it's about two to one, right? Like police is like 20 million, fire is 10 million. Is that about?
About 10, yes.
Something, yeah, that's about, so that the public understands where, where most of that's going. Okay, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions on the general fund expenses? Before I move on. Perfect, all right, so here we'll talk a little bit about the general fund forecast. The city's reserve policy requires us to maintain 30% of our annual operational expenses as a reserve target, and that 30% consists of 20% as general fund reserves and, and 10% is carved out as economic uncertainty. On this chart, as you can, as you can see in fiscal year 20, the city had to utilize the economic uncertainty to help kind of weather the economic impacts of the ongoing pandemic. In fiscal year 21, we are projecting to end with a fund balance of 20.6. With the caveat that, that does include the first tranche, you know, of the, the 50% of the ARPA in fiscal year 21, as well as the fiscal year 22 does include a projection of receiving the second 50%. So for fiscal year 22 to 27, as you can kind of, you know, see on the chart, we do project to maintain the required reserve targets. Again, you know, just with a caveat that it's, it's with the much needed assistance for the ARPA that has helped kind of stabilize the budget, if you will. So just moving on to the next slide. We'll talk a little bit about our enterprise funds. And starting off with our wastewater enterprise, on the revenue side, we are projecting $63.8 million in fiscal year 22. Primarily, the, the key thing there is the $50 million you'll see included as other financing sources, so we are planning to bond finance, the wastewater sprawl, the plant expansion project. And then in fiscal year 23, you'll see somewhat of normal revenues that we see generally in a given year, which is about 15.8. So we are not a whole lot of change as far as services, charges for services go. We are expecting some growth due to new development that's coming online. And we'll talk a little bit about more what's in the work plans for enterprise funds as far as, you know, work plan goes. And on the expense side for fiscal year 22, we're looking to expand about 43.5, and then in fiscal year 23, $37 million. Again, primarily category there again is capital outlay expenditures on the wastewater treatment. Next slide, please. On the water enterprise side, not a much change, more of a status quo budget, if you will. We're maintaining about $14.5 million in 22, we're expecting as revenue, and then 14.9 in 23. And then on the expense side, we have $17.9 million in 22, and then 18.3 in 23. Primarily, those areas in the capital outlay include some, you know, water line replacement projects that we have programmed in. And in addition to that, you know, just our day-to-day operational expenses. That concludes my report on the general fund and the enterprise ones. If there's any questions, I'm happy to take them now.
Anybody have questions before we move on? Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mayor. Now we'll go on to each department, and I'll start you off with administration, which is a kind of a hodgepodge of many different functions that we do, but most, all of them you will certainly recognize. Recreation, public information, housing, vulnerable populations, which is labeled community services, emergency operations, the city attorney is not under me, he's, he is appointed by you, but his budget's within mine, and so is the city clerks. And so in told, all of that is about 12 employees, five of which are in the recreation department, and we'll have a separate recreation presentation as part of this. As you can see, much with a lot of our other budgets, very minor changes, nothing added, nothing really increasing the budget, and so it takes about 5 million to put on all of those functions annually. Some of the highlights of the administrative department, or that, that area handled the city's COVID-19 response beginning March of last year, and we're still in the middle of that. The fiscal recovery plan, the advancement of economic development projects, many of these projects are much farther along than they ever have been, and, and some do have momentum, and we're, we're certainly proud that we've been able to do some good work about that. And I put this label called adaptive communication, and it may, maybe a strange word to use, but all this virtual Zoom, Facebook Live, YouTube, all these things are things we all had to learn how to do. Most of us, especially maybe in my generation, didn't know how to do a lot of these things, the, the kids did, but we're grateful that we have figured out we're better at it, we're not perfect at it, and I'm hoping pretty soon we can not get any better at it and get back into council chambers and see everybody again, but and then we've, we've staffed a couple of city council ad hoc committees, which have done a lot of policy work and a lot of exploration of certain items, including fire, the sports park, and the homeless ad hoc committee as well. So those were some of the, the high level highlights. Talking about some of the high level things for the work plan, this is included in your packet, and this is also what we've discussed with you, so we've made not one change to the work plan since last time we talked to you. But I just want each department to be able to just kind of remind you of some of the, the very high level things we're doing and that we're excited about, and development of a social media strategy and guidelines. A lot of these things we're learning about as we go and learning what to do and what not to do sometimes, and so we'll be putting that together. Update our emergency operations plan now that we have our EOC coordinator on board. He's doing a great job of getting up to speed and, and getting us the training, getting us prepared. And then continue to implement approved ad hoc committee on homeless recommendations that will definitely fall into fiscal year 22 and probably 23 as well. And then as is included on our work plan, the gourmet alley stakeholder group, or whatever we end up calling it, we'll be doing that here, beginning in the new fiscal year as well, which shows another focus that we have on continued economic development, and then again, economic development projects that many of these will go on for many years, but we're, we're making some progress on, on many of them. Okay, so with that, if you don't have any questions for me about administration, I'm going to have Adam Henig speak to you about the recreation division. So go ahead, Adam, just tell me when to advance the slide, and I'll, I'll be your, be your person.
All right, good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Adam Henig, Recreation Manager, and I'm going to talk about the Recreation Division. Next slide. Okay, so as you can see, our focus is to provide as many services and to meet the recreational needs of our residents. Our primary functions are to offer programs to all ages and all interests. We provide logistical support during local emergencies, including the global pandemic, where we reallocated employee capital from our traditional programming to respond to COVID-19. We connect seniors with free vital services such as nutrition and tax and legal assistance, as well as other social services. We support disadvantaged and low-income families. This is happening at San Ysidro Cultural Center through various partnerships, South County Task Force, San Clara County, San Ysidro, New Wave of Vida, and the Family Resource Center. And we staff four city commissions, two boards, and run the citywide to your program. Next slide. So some recent highlights here is we supported nearly a dozen vaccination and testing sites. When the call comes, the recreation team pivots from our day-to-day responsibilities to support the community needs in times of crisis. In addition to testing and vaccinate, vaccinate, vaccinating, we played an integral role addressing food insecurity, serving more than 30,000 meals at San Ysidro Park and the Senior Center. We've implemented a registration system that is mobile-friendly and cost-effective, making it easier for residents to sign up for programs. And we completed the facility and recreation needs assessment. We provided several recommendations, or several recommendations were provided to us such as addressing a lack of facility space that's dedicated to recreation programs and services, ways to increase program participation, and a pricing and revenue plan. Next slide. And so our plan for the next couple of years is to implement the needs assessment recommendation to convert the senior center into a community center. With COVID-19 cases decreasing and the city preparing for reopening, we're exploring ways to effectively use current facility space. There is a need for flexible and shared space. The conversion can increase our ability to offer more services and programs to residents of all ages and interests with minimal disruption to existing services. We are partnering with Santa Clara County and First Five California to open and operate a family resource center at San Ysidro Cultural Center. A provider was recently selected, and they're expected to launch this summer. We plan to issue a request for proposal for an independent pool operator at Christopher High School Aquatic Center. The city would provide access to a safe facility while the operator would manage the day-to-day operations. And we also plan to implement pricing recommendations from that needs assessment, which contribute to the generation of revenue and maintain the same investment from the general fund.
Right, thank you, Adam. Next up is Leanne McPhillips, who is our Admin Services Human Resources Risk Manager and our City Clerk.
Before we go, can I ask, sorry, Adam, a question?
Yes.
Hey, Adam, it's Fred here. Hey, thank you, great job that you're doing. In regards to presentation, COVID, to where we're at. Number, I didn't see that, the public, the number of recreation.
Fred, I don't, I don't think we're getting, Adam, are you able to hear what he's saying? No. It's too broken, Fred.
So, all right, if not, just tell me if you can hear me, Adam. First of all, great presentation, garden of happening now, we're sorting, as COVID, we see more programs coming into place, and we see more revenue in regards to programs that we're going to offer throughout the city.
No, I can't hear what he says either, but if Adam can, then Adam, you can try and answer it.
You know, I, I, I'm sorry, Councilmember Tovar, I, I hear parts of what you're saying about reopening, that we're offering more programs, we're able to generate more revenue. I didn't hear a question, if there was one.
Yeah, no, the, the question is, do we foresee, given that we're getting past COVID, do we foresee more programs coming out and more revenue? Obviously, the community wants to know, because one of the things that we all hear is that there need more programs for, for, for youth, and I just wanted you to sort of address that.
Yes, and thank you for asking. You know, since, since September, we've been able to offer in-person programming, and you know, with each new seasonal quarter, we've been able to offer more and more, and in this summer, we're going to be offering more programs now than we have since the, the beginning of the pandemic. So, and we're also able to find and recruit more contract instructors who are off, who are able to offer an array of, of, of different types of programs for, for kids who are into sports, for kids who are into science, magic, theater, all sorts of different types of program.
Thank you, Adam. All right, Councilmember Armand Darris, did you have a question for Adam?
I do. Thank you, Adam, for the information. I'm wondering, I saw that we are going to put out an RFP for the pool, the aquatic center jobs. So we're considering contracting out those jobs, those positions?
Yeah, yeah, so what we're, we're considering doing is hiring an operator who would then hire their own lifeguards, you know, their own concessionaires, and, and they would, they would be able to operate the day-to-day operations, but we, we would still be in charge of the pool facility.
We currently operate those up, we are currently in charge of those operations, right?
We, we currently operate the pool, yeah. It's obviously not, not running at this very moment, but in the past, the city did hire seasonal, hourly, non-benefited staff.
Right, so how many jobs would we be losing to a contractor if those seasonal hourly jobs?
Well, it depends what if there if a contractor is selected, it depends what the hours of operation are, what type of programs there are, what type of swim lessons. There's there's a possibility they could actually provide more jobs and more classes, more programs for the community than we would be able to, just because they may have more of a bandwidth to do so.
Is that what we're outlining in the RFP?
Yeah, so the RFP is going to require that they offer, you know, for example, swimming lessons, that they open it up for recreation swim, that they provide lap swim, those types of activities.
You're getting very detailed in one particular subject. Can I ask that you ask those questions off? This is a study session for the budget. Can we move on to the next department?
Yeah, but isn't this part of the budget, right? It's like, are we gonna save money on this? Is this a budget or a money saving measure? Is this a way to?
I think that's what he was saying, but you were asking number of jobs lost, which was not a money saving thing. Okay.
Mayor, may I answer that question real quick?
Yes.
I think I could help. Ms. Armand Darris, the object is to evaluate the operations and whether that's an RFP or that's keeping it in house. That's actually going to be up to council to decide, but we feel we need to go to the process to see what our options are. And we'll be doing that during the fiscal year, but any change in operations and staffing will come before council.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jimmy. Thank you, Adam.
Okay, all right, it's Leah's turn. Go ahead, Leah.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, members of the council and members of the Gilroy community. Leanne McPhillips here, and I'm going to talk to you this evening about the Administrative Services Department. Next slide. The Administrative Services Department is primarily an internal service provider to operating departments and employees of the city. So the functions that are grouped together that kind of form a support network to the remaining departments in the city are facilities, fleet, human resources and risk management and information technology. Between these four divisions, we have 18 employees, five in facilities, four in fleet, five in human resources, risk management and four in information technology. Next slide, please. And this is the budget summary for fiscal year one projected and what's been requested for fiscal year 22 and 23. And primarily the changes are related to projects and large purchases that we've identified in fleet and facilities. Those represent the changes that you see that where where the number kind of goes up in fiscal year 22 and then drops back down to 23 because it's a one-time project that's budgeted in that year or one-time fleet purchases that are budgeted in a particular year and then the budget drops back down again. Information technology has some funding ups and downs related to IT technology projects and and new equipment and special projects like our cybersecurity program and that kind of thing. But the overall, we're requesting 12.4 million in fiscal year 22 and 10.8 million in fiscal year 23. So you see that it drops back down in 23 after one-time funds have been expended in 22. Next slide. So some of the highlights, I've got this divided up into each division because, as you can imagine, facilities, fleet, human resources and IT are all four completely different functions. But we're all small divisions that are supporting the organization. So I wanted to highlight a few things related to each division so that you receive that information and feedback and know know what we've done and what we're going to be doing. So in facilities, we've had a few different projects this past couple of years. We've done some improvements at the Gilroy Senior Center. One of the really important things that facilities did to support the organization during the last year is different safety measures related to COVID that we needed to install at various city offices. And then they the group assisted with the facility needs for the COVID testing site at the City Hall Annex. And as you know, that testing site has been there for several months and has been well utilized by the community. Some improvements at the Willie House and then coordinated some security upgrades at the Corporation Yard in order to reduce vandalism. We were having seen an increase in vandalism at the Corporation Yard to accessing through the back fencing by that runs along Highway 101. So we had to put some improvements in there to keep keep folks out that we didn't want coming into the city yard. In fleet, we coordinated the lease purchase for a new type one fire engine, which is now under construction. We completed all of our mandated vehicle inspections and certifications to include our formal DMV terminal inspection and just keeping our fleet up and running. We have an aging fleet and and so it takes a lot of work by our fleet mechanics to ensure that especially our public safety vehicles are put back in service right away if something breaks down. And then just doing the preventative maintenance, just like your vehicle at home, doing preventative maintenance on city vehicles helps them to last longer. And so the fleet group does a great job of making sure that we're getting the most from every vehicle that we own. And then we managed the fuel usage and distribution for the city fleet and we provided some support for the fuel tank repair and fuel dispenser replacement project that is currently getting underway. Next slide. In the human resources and risk management area, over the last two years, we completed 77 recruitments, processed 1,492 employment applications and onboarded 72 employees. We also completed contract negotiations with local 2005. And as council knows, we had to go through the painful process of concession bargaining with all of our labor groups. We unfortunately had to coordinate the layoff process and implemented a pay reduction, additional paid leave program, all as a result of our reduced revenues and the impacts of COVID-19 on our organization. And then in response to COVID-19, we developed and implemented an emergency telework policy because we have had a lot of our employees working at home and equipment loan program because we had employees that needed equipment to from the city to take home so they could do their work at home. And then we coordinated vaccinations for our non-safety employees. And then in the information technology area, we have spent time, a significant amount of time working on the ERP and LMS selection and implementation preparation, which is now underway. Also migrated to the Office 365 program and all of our Microsoft products and email are in the cloud now. And we've worked on some network projects and really we couldn't have done what we've done over this last year during COVID-19 without the support of our IT group assisting us with devices and services so that we could work remotely. Absolutely fabulous job, you know, just how responsive they were to everything that came up and it, you know, at times it meant they dropped other work to assist us with this, but this was absolutely, absolutely critical this last year. Next slide. So on our work plan for the upcoming two-year cycle in the facilities area, number one on the list and I'm calling it out because it's a significant project is replacing the HBAC system at City Hall. This is an older building and the HBAC system is on its last leg. And we need to have a safe work environment with good air quality here for the employees that are working in the building and for our citizens coming here for services. And so we've reached that point where this project has to go forward. Or we're gonna, it's gonna be something that's gonna just completely break down and we're not going to be able to fix it. So we've kind of reached that final point where where we need to pull the trigger and move forward with this particular project. In addition, we need to replace the HBAC system at Old City Hall. We are a landlord and we have a tenant at that building and the HBAC system is in dire need of upgrades. And that project is included as part of the planned fiscal year 22 budget. We have some work to do at the Christopher High School Activity Pool. We need to remove a dilapidated arbor over at Wheeler and then we're gonna oversee some solar power project installation that's going to be placed on city-owned facilities. So the facilities group will be working on those projects over the next two years. In the fleet division, we are planning to coordinate lease purchase process for three additional fire apparatus over the next two years. Again, we've pushed our fleet as far as we can and and probably a little too far. And so now we're having to replace things more quickly than than we maybe would like to in this current fiscal market, but with the lease purchase program, we're able to spread the cost over multiple years and not have that big lump sum payment that we need to make upfront. So using that tool while interest rates are low is to our advantage. We plan to purchase and place into service six patrol units over the next two years and 10 other non-safety vehicles. And then just continue all of our maintenance and inspection and compliance, things that we have to do in the fleet area. Next slide. In the human resources and risk management area, we're going to be implementing the human capital module of the ERP system. We've already begun that process. We started that in April of this year. And it is truly a year-long process to do a major conversion of this nature so that we convert over all of our employee data and are able to manage that data and process our payroll accurately. We're working on our return to work as we near our target date of opening city offices on August 30th. We need to have a plan for returning our employees that have been working offsite to returning into the work environment. So we're working on a plan for that. We've got some labor contract negotiations over this next two years. We're going to have some vacant positions to fill. And we're finishing the final implementation of some onboarding software to make the onboarding process go a bit smoother and faster with new hires. Information technology will continue coordination of the ERP and LMS implementation. They've got a, they've got a keen focus on finishing our cybersecurity assessment plan and implementation. That will be happening over the next two years. We've got upgrades to the council chambers. That's going to get completed at the beginning of fiscal year 22. So we're ready to go in September when we have our first in-person council meeting. And then a few other projects of our replacing of some multi-function print copy machines and citywide desktop replacements. So we have lots to do over the next two years and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Leanne. Why don't we go ahead and move on? I don't see any questions. Oh, Dion has a question.
Yes, Dion, Councilmember Brocko.
I remember approving the HVAC replacement at City Hall about five years ago. Why hasn't it been done?
That that project was never able to move forward. It the funding went away relative to that project. And and so it's it's just, you know, it's we've tried to 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 put it together. We had it as part of, I think, a five-year plan, but but it wasn't ever fully funded. We did the, we've already done the design engineering of the system replacement. That part's already been completed and is in place. But due to the high price tag of actually replacing the whole system, that part of the project has not been funded until until we hope now when if the council approves it as part of the fiscal year 22, 23 budget.
Can I ask sort of a similar question in regard? Yeah, thank you. Sorry, thank you, Mayor. In regards to the HVAC at Old City Hall, as you mentioned, we're landlords. It's my understanding from the last time that they were behind in sort of the lease or payments.
No, no, not anymore.
Okay, no, I'm just, I'm.
No, they're all caught up.
Perfect. All right. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the Finance Department with the Finance Director Harzot Singh.
I'll be back on the on the deck here. I'll go over the highlights for Finance Department. The Finance Department primarily is tasked with providing timely and accurate finance, financial information to city management, city council and the public. We also administer the city's assets, including the cash and investments. And essentially, we provide, you know, all in-house services as it relates to paying the bills or accounts payable. You know, billing for the receivables that the city is owed as far as payroll, investment and debt services. Other big component for us is on the receivable side is the utility billing, since the city does provide water and wastewater. We are supported by 13 FTEs. Next slide. From a budget summary perspective, again, from, you know, we're essentially two cost centers, finance and utility billing. As you can see, our total expenditures are holding pretty tight from fiscal year 21 all throughout fiscal year 23. Next slide. As far as our highlights go, one of the key things that we did was we took advantage of the low interest rate environment and we financed the existing bonds that we have to achieve about $6.4 million in debt service savings over the term. We also brought on new financial auditors all during COVID, which is a huge undertaking, especially, you know, working remotely and so forth. So we're very proud of our team to achieve this as well. And it was a successful implementation. We also ensured business continuity and we assisted in developing the fiscal recovery plan that the city administrators administrators office, you know, helped craft and roll out. And lastly, we advocated and did receive some fiscal resources, you know, namely the CARES Act dollars as well as the most recent ARPA funding. Next slide. And as far as our work plan that goes for the next two years, we are just around the corner from completing the ERP implementation and we'll be rolling out the related comprehensive training curriculum. So it does require a lot of end user training. So we'll be doing that. We'll also be bringing back to council the master user fee schedule update, which was completed in the beginning of fiscal year 20, but was deferred due to COVID reasons. So we'll bring that back to council for consideration. And we'll also be partnering with our teammates in Public Works to initiate and a comprehensive utilities rate study, which will include both water and wastewater. And lastly, we're going to be evaluating and recommending options to the to the council to refinance pension obligations. That concludes my report.
Harzot, this is Peter LaRome. When you also have a quick question for you. Can you speak to the city's credit rating and how the proposed items for the budget there might impact that if at all?
I'm not sure as to Jimmy, you may be able to help me out here as far as our most recent credit rating on the refinance bonds. I think we certainly are well rated and as far as what our two-year budget proposes, if you will, from a general fund perspective, I think our numbers are looking solid, especially as we're maintaining our, you know, reserve targets go and so forth. And on the wastewater side, we're actually meeting tomorrow with the rating agency S and P to rate our upcoming wastewater bond issuance. High level, we do not anticipate any significant changes. You know, the utilities are well equipped and our forecast shows very good coverage throughout the five years. And then again, we'll talk more in as we get into the next, you know, next month and we bring back the bond issuance back to the council for for approval and what that really entails as far as, you know, looking forward for those utilities. But as far as a point in time, I don't have any concerns as far as, you know, any negative impacts to the to the city's credit rating.
Great. And I know we've been very conservative with that over the years and that it's good to hear and a credit to the finance team doing their job there. So thank you.
Right. And I would say equally credit to the city council for, you know, supporting the city, you know, the city management in rolling out those initiatives. I know there were a lot of painful decisions made.
All right.
All right, thank you. Next up is Karen Garner, Community Development Director.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Karen Garner with Community Development Department. And so the Community Development Department has several different functions, all working together, of course, to support the development community. And so that includes our planning division, which of course is permitting plan checks, inspections, code enforcement, fire prevention. What is technically known as the Certified Unified Program Agencies or COOPA, but you know it as hazardous materials and also wastewater pretreatment. We have also added now a customer service division and we're supported by 23 full-time staff. Next slide. So our budget for this year is projected at about 3.8 million. There is an increase which reflects the add backs of staff and then also some one-time projects, mainly the housing element update and the funds necessary to pay for that housing element update that's required by the state. Next slide. So some of the highlights over the past couple of years, of course, completing the 2040 general plan, which was years in the making. So we're very happy to have that completed. And really, I want to highlight that just the reinvention of the services that we provide. We had been a totally paper-based. Department and to go to completely digital and remote working because of COVID. Really was a lot of time and effort by staff and really being creative, working with our customers to make sure we were continuing on because. Outside of the few months right when we had the initial restrictions and shutdown. Development quickly picked back up. And so we had to figure out how to respond to that and still provide. The level of service that our customers are used to. We also did develop and launch the what we call the Alfresco Outdoor Dining Program in response to COVID-19 that allows our restaurants to. Have dining outside. And then we began the development of the land management system. EnterGov is the system we're using. And this really integrates and automates all of our permit and inspection functions and does move us into that full digital age. And then finally, what we. Have done over the past couple of years, just to put some numbers around it, is finalized. Over 1,900 construction permits and performed almost 22,000 inspections. Next slide. And then our work plan looking ahead for the next couple of years is to launch EnterGov Land Management System. And that will include not only additional staff training, but also training our customers that use the system. And trying to make it as easy as possible for them to learn how to use that and. Get the level of service that'll be much enhanced from what we can provide today. We need to complete the zoning code and zoning map update. This is goes with completing the general plan. So this is kind of our next step after we have finished that. And then also updating the general plan housing element. Although it's not due until January of 2023, there's a lot of work that starts now. In fact, we'll be coming to council soon to. Overview all those steps that go into it between now and then. And then also something I know council was very much wanted us to take a look at was to develop an inclusionary housing or some sort of affordable housing incentive policy. So we'll be. Coming back to council with that. And we also need to prepare greenhouse gas reduction plan or climate action plan. This was something that was. Spelled out as a policy in our general plan that we would have that done within three years of the time the adoption of the general plan. I do want to mention, last time we talked, we talked about. Grant funding that we were going to be looking at for the downtown specific plan. We have since been informed that we did not receive any grant funding as requested. So we're very disappointed with that. Because of that, there's there may be a few little projects that we can do that are in support of. Eventually updating the specific plan, but as right now, we do not have funding to do a comprehensive update of that specific plan. Okay, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those at this time.
Okay, does anyone have questions for Karen?
I have a question for Karen.
Okay.
Karen, you had mentioned the zoning code and the next zoning code updates. Are you also budgeting for any of the necessary like Nexus studies for the in-lu parking fees and anything else in the side there as well?
Um, we do have, I don't know about the in-lu parking fee. We do have some grant funding that we've already received, which. Helps us with a few, you know, little elements here and there of updating the zoning code, but in lieu. Parking fee is not one of them.
So that that's grant-dependent to get an Nexus study?
It would be. I mean, it would either have to be general fund-funded or grant-funded.
So if that came back in the future that you saw that, because I know right now we don't have a Nexus study to actually do that, that would just be something you would bring forward to council?
Correct, correct. So if that ends up, that is something we're working on and it needs funding behind it, we would come to council and at the time we are requesting the. Item, we would request funding for it at that time, a budget adjustment.
Okay. And one other question was that you had mentioned in your opening comments that you have a customer service division. Is that? What's the cost of that? And is that the item that was brought forward back? A few months ago that you wanted to build out an entire customer service division? So what's the cost of it? And are there employees that are already in it?
Yes. So so it is what we've talked about a few months ago, and it's really a shifting of employees that are already part of. Community development. The one change was we had a planning manager position that was eliminated due to the cuts. And at that time, though, we also created a customer service manager position. And we were fortunate that one of our our planning manager was. Qualified to take on the customer service manager position. But outside of that, it's existing staff. For example, we had a planner, one position that was also reclassified to take on GIS responsibilities. And so that existing position also now is under customer service. Because of the GIS component mainly, we see that as as something that provides services both internally and externally. So. No new. Positions, no new dollars associated with that, just shifting from existing divisions to the new customer service division.
So will those GIS that will they also be doing planning or just focusing on what you just said?
So that position is half planning, half GIS. And so in their in their role, the entire position though reports within the customer service division, just because. We had to put, you know, since we can't split a person reporting to two different supervisors, so we put them in customer service.
Okay. And a final question is, so I see there's an increase in the budget. Will we be able to see those line items in the budget in on June 7?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Jimmy, does that conclude all the departments?
No, next up is the Fire Department.
Oh, sorry.
Good evening, Wyatt.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Jim Wyatt, your Fire Chief for the Fire Department. Just want to go over very quickly some some key things, but let me go over the purpose and functions of the Fire Department, and it's to protect the lives, property and environment. Of the Gilroy community by employing the latest fire, rescue, emergency medical service and prevention technology technologies. I would say that. As a as a as a result of the pandemic, we're also now your vaccinators too. We're supported by 44 FTEs. Next slide, please. And so our budget is laid out as 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 you see. Fire administration for this fiscal year was 1.4 million. For fiscal 22, you're going to see an increase to 1.8 and then fiscal 23, 2.0 million. And that's related to. A few things. One of them is a a staff position that we gained. And then along with that, we also saw some increases from. From both fleet and from facilities. And then also we saw some some benefits and retirements that also were included in that. And the same thing we saw with the fire operations budget, we saw. From this year, 10.3 to 10.4 for next fiscal year and then 10.6. For fiscal year 23. These reflect changes in the additional firefighters that we just hired. Along with. Benefits and and some salary increases. And then for our total expenditures for this year, 11.7. Next year will be 12.2 and then finally in fiscal 23, 12.6. Next slide, please. So some of the highlights of this year, we just took the five most most prevalent ones. We completed the San Teresa Fire District Alternative Service Model Staffing. Pilot Study. And in that study, we were able to demonstrate that with the addition of even a part-time station. The San Teresa Response Times decreased by three minutes and 19 seconds. We actually went from 10 minutes and 51 minutes. Down to seven minutes and and 32 seconds on the average. And then on top of that, the we also demonstrated with the San Teresa unit. That we could decrease citywide response times down by 36 seconds, which doesn't sound like much, but. We we saw a significant increase in the number of what we call. Patients that were saved. From cardiac arrest, meaning that we got return of spontaneous pulses. And I don't believe that we would have nearly seen that many of them this past year without the. The San Teresa unit. On top of that, we've been able to demonstrate that with multiple calls. For service coming in, our responsiveness is much better with the San Teresa unit and. The San Teresa unit, by the way, is only a part-time unit. It only goes. From 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And we still miss about a third of our our calls at night in the San Teresa unit. So it's really demonstrated its worth. We also completed our records management system upgrade and with that, we're we are going to be able to retrieve. Data that before we haven't been able to. And one and one of the special. Buttons that we have that is part of our RMS is for the homeless or. Unhoused population. And with that, we'll be able to retrieve their EMS or EMS responses for them as well as any fires and other types of service. We also completed our our contract for the new station alerting system. There's been a little bit of delay in installing that. As Leanne McPhillips mentioned to you, they've been quite busy and. Handling all sorts of upgrades in other parts of the city and including the city bandwidth. And so it's delayed us just a little bit, but we anticipate probably another 30 seconds decrease. In our response times, once we fully implement the station learning system. And then the fourth item down, this COVID-19 personal protective equipment to city staff and participated in the. County program to vaccinate employees and Gilroy residents. I can't tell you enough, and I, as I said last. At the last council meeting, what a huge success this has been, even though we've we've played. Not in the numbers part of it, but providing vaccines to the to our most vulnerable. And certainly assisting the city in the. The vaccinations throughout the. Throughout the city itself in numerous pop-up clinics as well as the mass vaccination center over at Gilroy High School. And then also this year, we've hired three new firefighter medics. We employed a new. Program or at least a new interview process where we included. A testing of their paramedic skills. So we're assured to get high-quality paramedics. At the same time, we we are sending them through a. Fire Academy right now, they they'll be coming out in August. They've been highly successful and we've received many compliments from. The department that's running the the academy, the quality of your firefighters. Excellent. Thank you. And then our work plan. The. We plan and and implement full, we planned and implement full staffing for San Teresa. Area to optimize service within the district beginning on December 31, 2021. This is directly related to the three firefighters that we have in the academy right now. We anticipate by the time they get out and they become accredited paramedics. In Seneca County that they'll be fully capable of augmenting our. Our staffing to handle a full 24-hour, seven-day-a-week San Teresa station. And then. We plan to finalize our funding options for the construction of a temporary and permanent fire station in the San Teresa District. You'll, the city administrator will be seeing a full staff report. With our recommendation, but we've been gathering the information of what it would take to actually construct the pad at the. The current fire station with a temporary trailer and then also along with that. The other option of remodeling the teak building where they're currently housed. And then, of course, looking at, looking forward to the actual funding for the permanent fire station. And then third bullet down, monitor and inspect the vendor, which is Rosenbauer. As they build our newly purchased Type 1 engine. In fact, we're sending three of our. Staff members, a division chief and. Fire, two fire engineers, or actually, I'm sorry, a fire captain and a fire engineer to go and inspect. The first part of the build and then later on in the year or early next year, they'll do a second inspection. And then, of course, a final inspection before delivery. And then fourth bullet, continued development of command and tactical radio frequencies with the Seneca County. Fire departments and districts. Part of this is is through the 800 megahertz. Upgrade that has been done countywide. And I'll just say that that's been a very successful program for us, although not all the. The mutual aid entities have joined us just yet, but they will. And with that, we'll have additional command channels and tactical channels in which to handle multiple events. Then the last item is to upgrade our fire dispatching and crew turnout times to meet SOC time recommendations. We're researching. Current. Best practices for fire dispatching along with fire dispatching protocols that could be taught to our our dispatchers. Along with that, if you couple that with our our. Our. The words escaping me, our alert system, I'm sorry, our station alert system. That will allow the dispatchers to actually. Simultaneously dispatch multiple stations at the same time. Right now, it's very linear, so it's very time-consuming. It could take up to. 30 to 45 seconds to do a full dispatch for a structured response with our new system. Coupled with. Dispatch training and training within our own ranks, we should be able to increase our capabilities. To respond quicker out the door. And if we're quicker out the door, we can get to the the incidents just that much faster. So we're looking at a probably a 30-second. Decrease in our times. And then. Last slide, please. Okay, sorry about that. So I'm available for any questions you might have in regards to any of the. Work plan or or budget items I've already mentioned to you.
Thank you, Chief. Does anyone have any questions before we move on to police? Okay, thank you. Next, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, members of the public, Bedouins, Middle Side, Chief of Police for the Gilroy Police Department. And really. Our our goal and purpose has always been to partner with the community and ensure that we're able to provide those services. And always keep it in mind that when we onboard people, we. We want their values to align with us. And that is, we want them to go out there. And do the job always in a respectful manner, having the best of integrity. And carrying out those functions with compassion, always being a team player and always holding themselves accountable. Our agency is divided into three divisions and each division is ran by or managed by a captain or a commander. The the division that most folks out of the community see is our patrol officers, and that's a field operation division. In order to the field operation division, some of these officers can wear multiple hats. Especially if they have specialized training and tactics. Or even as you see here in the picture, in bike patrol. And then we have the Special Operations Division, and that's mainly the. And then we have the Special Operations Division and that's mainly the investigative arm of the department. And that's the the traditional investigations, the anti-crime team, the traffic division. And also some of those officers have specialized training, particularly when we speak of major accidents and folks in the traffic unit. Some of them have specialized training in investigating and reconstructing serious accidents. And finally, we have the administrative division and that is our our professional support staff. The wing of the house and that is the records division, the communication and also our management analyst and budget. And that is also managed by a captain. We have ninety-nine full-time employees. With approximately thirty-three of them being professional support staff. Next slide, please. This is our our projected. Numbers for fiscal year twenty-one, as you can see, a slight decrease due to the COVID mitigation plan that we implemented. And fiscal year twenty-two, coming back to what our status quo numbers are. And you see a slight increase for fiscal year twenty-three and that is due primarily to labor negotiated raises and increase in pension payments. Next slide, please. About some of the good good quality of work that our folks have been doing, I like to share with you a couple of those highlights like city administrator Ford has mentioned, we too have. Have adapted to some of the COVID. Shelter-in-place restrictions. So we ourselves have have conducted some adaptive communication. Particularly in this fiscal year, we have the opportunity to conduct five virtual sessions. And we started off with the straight talk, serious, really addressing those hard questions circling surrounding. The use of force and the employment of forces that relates to police practices. Eventually, when I took over the organization October, I we held an introductory. Town hall meeting in English and then at the end of the year, I was able to do that same town hall meeting. In Spanish and we assembled a great group of officers that are bilingual, really in experts in their own respective fields. And so we were, we provided the opportunity for our our Spanish-speaking members of the community. To be able to ask those questions for them from really any of our divisions. And so. We've also had officers that that, including myself, that participated in a series of race equity and racial justice. Sessions and really their virtual circle sessions. And finally, we were invited to a meeting. And it's the Sali Sida Royal Vita meeting in late April, we were also able to provide. Presentation there with some of our folks internally. Chief Wyatt alluded to this and we're we're really excited that we finally, and this has been at least ten years in the making with the SVRIA, the Silicon Valley. Interoperability Authority System, the P twenty-five digital system. Really, it does just that. It gives us the ability to be interoperable with other public safety and the community departments throughout the county. Here locally, we have our fire department, our parks and our public works division that we are on the same frequency, the seven hundred megahertz now. We also were able to deploy tablets for patrol personnel. What this does is really allows them to be out in the field a little bit longer. And able to automate a lot of the forms that are time-consuming. And some of these forms, particularly when we speak about the stolen vehicle system or the missing missing person's system where it requires them to. Come to the station and submit it to the records division so that it could be inputted in a timely manner. Then now they could do that remotely. And eventually, we want to be able to do that with card readers and able to populate some of those forms that have been automated. Thanks to council support, we did implement a small unmanned aerial systems and we've actually have several success stories, including the apprehension. Of an in-progress burglary and the arrest of a homicide suspect to 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 just to mention a couple. They've deployed it approximately seventy times and the majority of those are training missions and, you know, during the. The heavy rains last season, we were able to fly the the waterways to ensure that no one was in danger. So that. That paid dividends when in itself. So hopefully, we continue with those with those success stories and we're able to share those with the community. All these succession planning and of our goals, we were, we had the ability to promote three captains and one of those captains replaced me when I was promoted. And two others are internal and we hired work from the outside and all all three of them had just been great. And to fill their positions, we were able also to promote two sergeants. So now. The captains are responsible to develop these two new sergeants and eventually. Prepare them to take over their position and conversely, my job is to prepare our three captains to eventually take over my position. During the the pandemic, this last year, we did have two officers that were designated infectious control officers. They really spearheaded all our efforts dealing with COVID. We did apply for a grant and we received approximately forty-four thousand dollars that we used to purchase. A variety of personal protective equipment and decontamination equipment and we have a temporary holding facility. And often we we had folks down there that tested positive. So we had this whole protocol that we had to follow every time that happened. And so that is costly and timely, but luckily with this with these funds, we were able to facilitate that process. Next slide, please. These are some of the the areas that we'll be focusing on to just to name a few. We we have a larger scale plan, but. We're really excited to be able to partner again with the district attorney's office in the school district. And initiate a diversion program and really the main purpose of that program is to redirect. Our juveniles from the juvenile justice system and really allow them that opportunity. Through a restorative justice program to to do good with 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 their mistakes. So. Really excited about that program and really the South County Youth Task Force I've been spearheading. Along with a couple of our administrators and pushing the program forward. So hopefully, that gets implemented here at the beginning of the next fiscal year. Continuing with our adaptive communication, our goal is to reinstitute the Community Police Academy. Again, we've done those in English and Spanish and we've also helped bilinguals. Academies and our goal is to offer one for the youth, a bifurcated one for the youth. So. We will adapt and we will continue with those engagement efforts that have paid dividends for for the community, for us. We also want to implement, develop and implement a three-year strategic plan. We've been working with a consultant. We established some internal focus groups and with focus areas. And we are meeting on a monthly basis and our goal is to parallel those those goals and plans with councils' goals and plan. And so that we are able to carry out that those goals, strategic goals here within the next three years. I've always said that equally important is to make sure that our folks are well and they are able to provide that service to the community. And throughout this last year, we've we've asked quite a bit from them. So our goal is to establish a formal wellness and resiliency program. And this will include an early warning system in the event that they're going through through some issues that. That they won't necessarily open up to our peers, our peer supporter chaplains or our EAP program, but. They could do it anonymously and also provide training and health opportunities for them. And so we hope to establish something formal here within the next two fiscal years as well. And I think that is the last of my bullet points and I'll take any questions if anyone has.
Okay, anyone with their hands raised? I see Councilmember Hilton has a hand raised.
Thank you, Mary Blankley. Thank you, Chief. I had a quick question about. About your, the communications dispatchers. How long has it been since it's been evaluated? Because I know service calls are increasing from both PD and fire. How long has it been since there's been a study or any sort of internal discussions on increasing those full-time employees from what's currently being stopped to. To meet the needs of the future?
Yeah, you know, I don't want to give you a wrong date, but I I want to say it was in twenty sixteen that we actually hired a consultant to do a staffing study for the Communication Center. And I'll be happy to to share some of the results with you if you'd like, but it focused on the. What staffing numbers really it would take to to provide that that service to the community and we did the same for the police department, too. So we did that in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen.
So you're not currently asking for any more staffing in the next two fiscal years? You think that's it's sufficient for what it is?
Yes, we're not, we're not asking for additional staffing.
Okay, and then one other question is, I know last year. The contract for school, school police officers with GUSD wasn't, obviously, they weren't in school, so that that wasn't expensive, it needed to be had. How long has it been since the, since that position or that relationship with GUSD has been evaluated on whether that's something to continue? As well and you know, whether that's community outreach, like you talked about yourself doing the. The town halls in Spanish and English. Have you ever thought about doing that program and looking in that 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 budget?
Let me make sure I I understand the question. You're asking specifically about the school resource program?
Yes, the school resource officers.
Right. And so that's a partnership, it's a shared cost with the school district and that dialogue, we we have not had that dialogue with the school district. As of yet. And because of COVID, that officer was was, those two officers redeployed patrol.
So there is plans, though, to reinstate that for fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three?
That would be my plan. I, like I said, I haven't broached that topic or subject yet with anyone from the school district, so that is yet to be determined.
Okay, and on June seventh, we'll be able to see that line item and where that where those funds come from as well and that that shared cost that you were talking about?
Yeah, that's that's included in our our budget.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think it's a separate number, Councilmember Hilton. You might want to ask that question yourself of the chief if you want something that's specific. I don't think our budget has a line item by person. And it would also be for the council to direct if we wanted some change there, not not for one person to to try to direct the chief. All right. If there are no other questions, I don't see any other hands raised, then we will go to Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor Blankley and a councilperson. This is Daryl Jordan, your Public Works Director, and tonight we'll be walking you through our Public Works program. Just the basic background is our purpose and functions, which most of you know. We're involved with the Public Works designing, building and maintaining the city's water, wastewater, storm drains, street sidewalks, parks, landscape, urban forest. Related infrastructure. You'll be hearing a lot about streets tonight. That's one of our big pushes with your direction. You'll see that in further slides. We're currently supported by forty-nine full-time employees. Next slide, please. As a budget summary, not to get caught in too much of the details here, but you'll see two main line items here that have a big jump in them. Particularly if you look down to the streets and urban forestry, we're moving for a one-point-three-million-dollar budget up to a three-point-one and a two-point-eight with the following year. That's due to the additional funds that. Council has directed that we infuse into our streets program. So you'll see that. The benefits of that with all the street resourcing projects throughout the next few years, as you're seeing actually right now. The other large jump, you'll see if you'll mind jumping down to the sewer program. We're moving from a thirteen-point-eight-million-dollar program up to a forty-two-point-six and a thirty-six-million-dollar program. That's basically. The result of the bond funding that city manager Forbes and our finance director are going to be pushing forward to help us get the monies we need to upgrade our plant. Next slide, please. Some highlights here, just to point out a few, staff worked extensively on our first street pavement rehabilitation project. Again. More street projects with the twenty-four-inch water maintenance installation as well. More moderate road resurfacing projects, as you're aware of, launched our local street repair program for residential streets in a few districts here in town. We also received a three-hundred-thousand-dollar grant from CalOES for our city backup generator, which is nice and we can. Always nice when we cannot spend general fund money and we can use grant monies from a different entity. So that's a big win for us there, three-hundred-thousand dollars for that project. And then transition into the city five-year capital improvement program for capital program budget for more robust, long-term planning. Project coordination and accounting. Next slide, please. Our work plan that you'll see over the next few years is we're developing our five-year paving program, again, hitting on our streets. Implementing paperless city work software, increased operational efficiency. So we'll have tablets out in the field, which our field persons can. Take pictures, log progress and projects, upload those to the cloud. Keep everybody on track, on schedule electronically, rather through paper and through email and through extra. Different types of technologies. So it's going to really help us go to a more paperless process throughout the public work system. We're also be providing backup generator power for city hall. So far, we unfortunately go out of power at this date. Our police department will be up and running, but our city hall would be in the dark. So we need to make sure we get that fixed and set up for any type of emergency situation. We continue to replace our stillwater service lines. We're way ahead of schedule on that for the health and welfare of our community. Also, we've been upgrading our fire hydrants. We're again way ahead of schedule on that. We're doing really well with that. Kudos to our water department. And then we'll be conducting our tree assessment throughout the our park system and developing a downtown parking management plan. Next slide, please. Capital improvement program. We're going to highlight just a few things here for you. Again, we're back at pavement. Again, one of our biggest issues here in town. We have a PCI, which is our pavement index at sixty-two. If you look on our chart here, that puts us down in the purple. We're at the at-risk. The fair condition of the average condition of our street system throughout the city. So with the money approved by council and the projects that we have. Schedule for this next year, we're going to try to at least maintain that sixty-two and our goal is to increase that as best we can with the monies that we have. Next slide, please. This is probably our our biggest project, the one that we're most proud of right now. As you are aware of, we just received back in February. The award for the second. Best plant run plan in the state of California. This is our second time we've got an award for this before we got the first place throughout the entire state. Competing with everybody else, which is something huge. We've really got to give kudos to Said out at our plant. He's done a fantastic job of man. Maintaining and managing that project and with this project, we'll be bringing in a lot of new technology out here. It's pretty state-of-the-art type stuff. New new filters will be put then out here. Solar treatment plant, we have. What was that? We have a hundred ninety kilowatt solar plant out there for for a solar power. We'll be upgrading this plant from an eight-point-five MGT to a eleven-point-five MGD plant. That's many gallons per day capacity. So with this bonding that we talked about earlier. That we'll be receiving, we'll be expanding this plant to to be able to handle the forecasted general plan. That we just finished approving for both ourselves and to the north. So really excited about this, something great for the city to celebrate and be proud of. Getting the second place award here for the state this past year. Next, next slide, please. And then finally, a project that you're aware of to the Eagleberry and Seven, the parking lot project, we're currently outreach into the local folks in the community. We've got flyers going out to everybody in a radius close in proximity. There will be receiving feedback from them, reporting that back to council. And coming up with some suggestions and some options there, as well as some new technology with some charging stations for this project. And with that, I'll be, we have one more, sorry, traffic circulation master plan for the city. Again, this is an area where we're going to be implementing efficiencies throughout the city to get people from point A to point B in a more efficient manner. Reducing greenhouse gases reduces our carbon footprint. And just make some more efficient circulation pattern throughout the city. We'll be pushing that project also throughout the next few years. And any questions you might have tonight, I'm here for any questions.
Yes, thank you, Daryl. I saw Councilmember La Romano's first and then Councilmember Armandaris and then Councilmember Tovar.
Daryl, thank you for the presentation. Do you mind going back to slide sixty-one, please?
I'll have Jimmy do that for us.
There we go, even better. That's right. He's running point. I forgot about that. With regard to the PCI, the pavement condition index. With regard to the PCI, the pavement condition index, you know, we're right now at a, we're right at a 62. Not too long ago, we were at a 69. If I remember correctly, funds that we receive for road repair under measure B, we can, we have more discretion in how we use those funds if we're above a 70 PCI. Is that correct?
That may be correct, but that may not be a direct factor in how we determine which streets get resurfaced.
Okay, that, that's helpful for me to understand as well. And given, given the kind of infusion, the short-term infusion that we're looking to, to inject into the road repair, do you have a sense for how much, what kind of numerical increase we might expect to see with the PCI?
Well, I'm, I'm told now that if we infuse the money that we have currently planned, we're going to minimize or minimally maintain the 662 level that we have now. Like anything else, the quicker we can get to it, the faster that we can rehab the street. Or getting the bandage on, on it the quickest, the more bang for the buck that we're going to get, the less detriment the street will go under. So we're also trying to batch these together councilmen so that when the contractor comes in, they're not bouncing around everywhere throughout town, but get a little bit more cost effectiveness by doing two streets neighboring each other rather than jumping a mile apart from each one. So we're trying to combine those as best we can to make a good financial decision on where they're spending, where they're spending our money. So.
I understood. So it sounds like then we'll have to wait a little bit to determine what the numerical improvement to the PCI is.
That's correct. And once we get these in place, we will upload those to our program, which will help us calculate for you and we'll be reporting that back to you.
Very good. I think it underscores just how expensive it is to do road repair and why we have to make the investments, even just to keep it at the level we're at now. Daryl, thank you very much for the information.
You're welcome.
That's it. And that's exactly right, Councilmember. Where, where, where you were asking about measure B money. If we were at 70 or above, it gives us the discretion, more discretion, the city of where we can use the money. Below 70, we are forced to put it into, into more particular things. And as for the PCI of 62, I'm still, I'm maintaining that we're lower than that because that was in 2019. And if we were to do a study again in 2021, given that we have not put any more money towards streets than we ever did, that that's even lower. So to me, it is, it's critical that we be addressing this. And that's why I'm very glad to see that that's the direction we're going. So thank you. All right, Councilmember Armand Darius, you were next.
Sure. Um, let's see. Regarding the community outreach regarding the parking lot on Eagleberry, what kind of, or how far out are you reaching out to folks in terms of the vicinity around the parking lot area? And are you doing outreach also in, in English and in Spanish?
Yes, that, that is a great question. Thank you. I believe that we're looking at a 500-foot radius from the project. And with that, Gary will be, Gary is our city engineer. He's spearheading this. He'll be doing this in both English and in Spanish in our written communication and any verbal communication as well. Great question.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan, yeah, both my questions were, were answered, but let me see if I can come up with something that. Yeah, the first one was regarding the pavement maintenance, obviously. And that was a great question that my colleague asked. In regards to, and then going to the parking lot, thank you, Councilmember Armand Darius for asking those questions. Remind me, what is the timeline again? Cause I, I spoke with a few business owners this weekend while I was out there sort of dining and stuff. And they still had not heard anything. They weren't sure of what was going on. So what's the timeline that we're going to start notifying or getting feedback from folks? Because one of the questions that people keep asking, when is this going to happen? So maybe you can just sort of refresh the community's memory on the next steps.
You bet. Great question, Councilman. Looks like from our city engineer, he's going to be reaching out through the month of June with all the outreach. So they should be seeing something if not within the next week or two, definitely in the next three weeks.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you. Hey, Daryl. Um, there's a, I just want to say kudos again for staff to work on those grants for that HVAC. That was huge. That came out about a month or so ago, and I really wanted to make sure it was highlighted again, and thank you for doing that. There's two things on your CIP program that aren't on your radar right now, that I just want to make sure that they are. And that's the bike master plan and the pedestrian master plan. And the reason why I, I just highlight those is the fact that both those are, well, one doesn't exist, but the bike master plan is over five years old. And many of these master plans that are over those, we are missing out on grant funding. I remember this as chair of the bike ped. So as those come up, I know you've got grant writers in there. Those are just two other plans. I know Gary's been looking forward to you, looking for funding sources to try to update, update those master plans. Thank you.
Yep. Great question. Gary's ensured me that those plans will be done by the end of this year. So we prepared for those grants.
Okay, Jimmy, does that conclude staff reports?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have just one slide or so here to finish this off and get into the conclusion. The ARP funds bridge the time between expected economic recovery in the next two years of service, including positions, infrastructure and revenue replacement. I do want to tell council that the five-year forecast that you were presented is manageable. It is by no means perfect and it is by no means without significant risk. So we are hanging in there. And I think we're making a good balance of continuing to invest, but also making sure that we're financially conservative, which saved us about a year ago. So the, the focus is also, as you see, very much on enterprise fund work. We have a lot of accumulated funds to do sewer and water projects, and it's time for us to get doing that. So that helped us not reduce as many employees when we did our reductions. So lastly, the, the, the next steps is tomorrow night, myself and the finance director will be doing a community budget meeting over Zoom as well, Facebook and all that. And we will do a short presentation, very similar to what you gave to you, and then answer any questions the public has or any feedback that they give us. We will return on the council budget adoption on June 7th. And with that, you will have all the other stuff we've done, but you'll also have the line items. And so I, I know we got questions about that. We will get that out to you earlier than in the packet. So that way, if you do have a specific question about where something is, it'll be, give us a little bit of time to, to help you out and see if we can work with you through that. So we will get the, the line item detail out to you sooner than the packet. And then we'll all have a, a happy new fiscal year on July 1st, which is also our first, our, our, our council meeting is actually on July 1st per the charter. And then we will, we, including the budget staff and a lot of us will be taking some time off. And I hope council does too, because we, we've all worked really hard in the last year. So well, with that, we'll take any additional feedback you have. The, the staff portion of this is, is completed. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Yes, I'd like to go to public comment at this, at this point here, because there may be some people who would like to speak on everything that they just heard. So Christina, can you let any, anybody in who wants to comment?
Yes, Jimmy, can you remove the PowerPoint? So if anyone who wishes to speak on this item, please raise your hand or press star nine to unmute yourself. Seeing none?
Oh, okay. That surprises me. Okay. So no public comments, then it'll, it'll come back to council. But I, I'd like to just summarize for, for myself and just as the mayor here. I want to say, first of all, Jimmy, thank you for the, the report, the, the memo form letter that you included in our packets. I thought was very well-written and explained how things are, are for us. I think it's important for the count, the public and the council to pay particular attention to what is happening with PERS. Because that, never mind the unfunded, the current requirement, the current payment amount is going up from seven and a half million to 13 and a half million. That's a $6 million increase. Like starting, it's, it's gradually getting there to fiscal year 2025, but we're already in fiscal year 2022. And the amount we budgeted of 10.3 isn't enough. That's just the current. So that is just something to be aware of when we talk about our workforce and adding more employees. And those are the costs that come with all of that. With our day-to-day services, I'm, and also important is that what is going to come back to us in this budget is what we've been directing staff all along as a city council, which is going to include significant more funding for streets. So that at the very least, our PCI doesn't continue to drop. And what I'm hearing tonight, we'll see if, if council gives consensus, is that we are in fact going to include that HVAC system that maybe five years ago, according to Councilmember Bracco, was already approved, but it did not get done. So those are the two things that, that I heard here. And then I would ask council members, when you get the report for the June, the, the first council meeting in June, if you have your own particular questions on items, please ask staff ahead of time, even if you want to re-ask it at the meeting for the public. That way things go smoother, staff is prepared, and everybody gets the answers that they're hoping for. Okay. Because our budget is the single most important thing we do, whether you feel that way or not, it is. That's what directs everything that we do. That's what, how we communicate with the public as to where we're setting our priorities. Okay. So do we have any other comments from council members? I see Councilmember Hilton with a hand raised.
Thank you, Mary Blankley. Um, Jimmy, I had a question on the committee and commissions request. Those were in our budget packet. Will those be presented on the June 7th meeting? And then we'll be able to have discussions on it then? Is that, was that the plan for that?
I believe they were attached to your packet tonight. We listed those.
Yeah, no, no, they were, but they weren't presented at all. That's all I'm asking about.
We, we typically do not present them. There are some that staff incorporates into the budget and there are others that we do not. But if you, you know, if that's something you want to talk about on the seventh, we could certainly go through those. But staff does not normally go through them.
So they're automatically requested, like, or granted? What, what do you mean? Cause they, those were wishes that came from those commissions and committees. Those were not, like, who gets to grant it? Are you saying staff granted or not?
Well, I wouldn't say necessarily staff granted, but I think if you look at the list of some of the recommendations, some of them just aren't anywhere near possible. And some of the others are included in certain budgets where activities they normally do. So that's why we give it to council to, to review and see if there are things they would, you know, like to add. But I wouldn't say we, we really deny or approve. I believe council does that.
But we're not doing it tonight. We're doing it on June 7th? Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. And hopefully I don't get cut off here. Jimmy or Leanne? And it was debating whether to ask this question, because I wasn't sure if this was the proper time or not. But a while back, we were having discussions and I, you know, obviously I don't want to get into negotiations with the different, with the different labor groups, but I was just wondering sort of, one of the, one of the questions I had brought up a while back ago, and I wasn't sure if now's the time to sort of just ask it once again, but in regards to, you know, certain management groups that gave up quite a bit, quite a bit concessions prior to COVID, obviously. And, and one of the things I was pushing for is that we make it whole for everybody. I wasn't sure if that's something that we can go into detail now, because I, I just worry that come June 7th, maybe too late to ask those specific questions.
I would answer that. That is a, most likely a closed session bargaining discussion that we can have with you. But I would, I would, I would not particularly want to do that at this point.
Got it. Yeah. And that's why I didn't want to go into too much detail. I just want to make sure if it's the proper venue to ask that. So is this something that we will have prior to making any final decisions on the budget on June 7th?
We, we have discussed how we may do some closed session work before, you know, before council meetings. I, I'll work with the mayor on that and I'll communicate back to you if, if that's possible. But typically our closed sessions are after the council meeting. So we do not have another council meeting between now and then.
Right. And that's why I'm asking this question, because I'm, I'm worried that whichever direction we go with it, I'm just worried that it may be too late, because obviously like you're saying, closed sessions is after the meeting. And we don't have one planned until the seventh, once after we make these decisions. So I would, I would like to have a discussion prior to sort of our final vote on June 7th.
And the only comment I would add, Councilmember Tovar, is that council already approved the main, the largest item, which was undoing the 9.23% pay reduction and additional paid leave program. That program has been undone as of April 1st, and the employees in the management group and the unrepresented employees received, received that, that payroll change back on April 1st.
Right. No, which, which I understand, but I think my question goes into a little bit more detail, more specific. So again, maybe I can send my questions offline and then have a discussion, a closed session discussion.
Yeah, because going into June 7th, you know, the, the, the hope is going to be that we can approve a budget. And staff is going to come forward with their detailed suggestion based on the priorities that this council as a majority has already set. Each of us as individuals have certain things that we would like to see, but it has to go through the council as a majority. And staff takes it, right? I know. And staff takes it as, as that's the council majority priority and then puts the money there first, second, third, until there's no more left. So when we come to June 7th, we're going to see where that, how that looks based on everything that we have directed staff to do this far. And if anybody wants to change something, I would hope that at that meeting, if you see something on there that you want to change, because there's no leftover money, it's a matter of you want to put it here instead of here, that you would be prepared with where that instead of is, so that we can all vote and pass a budget.
Right. Yeah, no, no, which, yeah, I, I completely understand that. Thank you for pointing that out. It's important. But Leanne, going back to, again, I don't want to go into specifics, but you know, my comments a while back were specifically in regards to GMA and sort of the concessions that they gave up and sort of my sort of requests and sort of trying to make them whole, given that they gave, gave up more than probably any other group. So I'm just curious, again, I, I don't know when and where those questions can be answered. Because again, I don't want us to make decisions without sort of us having that discussion.
Closed session would be the appropriate place.
Okay. Well, I'll leave it up to Jimmy and the mayor to sort of figure that out. And hopefully we can have that discussion prior. Thank you.
You're, you're asking for a closed session on this particular subject prior to adopting this year's budget?
Yeah, because it's something that I asked a while back ago and it hasn't been answered. It's, it was something that we said we were going to have further discussion about. So I thought that this might be the night to do it, but obviously it's, it's not. So I want to just have, you know, I want to have some further discussion on it.
I know. I just don't know that that's something the whole council is wanting as much as you do.
Right.
Right. Okay. So I will, I will leave that to discuss offline. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anything else to address tonight? No? All right. Am I adjourning this meeting? I think I'm adjourning the meeting. All right, everybody. Thank you all. Bye-bye.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Good night.
Night.